For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we will have Pastor Greg Carlson from the Park Seventh Day Adventist Church to provide us with an invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Boda.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you. Moving over one chair, Mr. Heath. I'm your mayor, and Ms. Lance, I think I heard a rumor about you. I've never seen this many people here before. I don't know, even the Hutchinsons are here. It's like a class reunion or something. Bonus checks, free doughnuts?
Free doughnuts.
Haircuts?
Free doughnuts.
Oh, doughnuts, okay.
Yeah.
But thank you for allowing me to be here. It's always an honor to come in and ask the Lord's blessing on what the men and women do to keep this city moving as powerheads. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity for this group of leaders in this community to come together and make decisions that affect all of us. And we ask that your wisdom and your guidance be with them, not only in this meeting, but in all the work that goes on before this meeting even happens. And so, Lord, bless us with your presence here today, and may your will be done in this community, in our lives, and bless each person, the families represented here, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. You know, what's good about tonight, if you weren't able to do it, we had a backup in Pastor Marty. If Pastor Marty, then we would have to go to our deputy city administrator, Andy Kitzro.
No, it's just.
We don't really want to. All right. So, moving on, we have a few things on the agenda this evening, some proclamations and certificates. So, at this time, I will turn the floor over to Mayor Heath.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think they're going to test my reading ability tonight. So, first of all, if I could have Shannon Hannah-Walt come up and stand with me, please. And I'm going to take Shannon's advice. After I say endometriosis once, I'm going to say Endo, because Ricard says Endo Warriors. So, whereas the Endometriosis Association...
Absolutely, fucking disgusting, but...
Okay, sorry about that, folks.
Okay. The Endometriosis Association is a nonprofit charitable organization that was founded in 1980 with the intent of bringing awareness to the underserved and misunderstood population of women who suffer from endometriosis, which affects an estimated 200 million women worldwide, the equivalent of one in every 10 women. And whereas Endo is a chronic illness increasing in epidemic rates, which causes fatigue, infertility, painful menstrual cycles, heavy bleeding, painful intercourse, lower back pain, intestinal issues, and debilitating pain in women of all ages and races. And whereas Endo is a thickening of the lining of the uterus, a hormonal and immune disease which can be found in the ovaries, fallopian tubes, ligaments supporting the uterus, other areas of the pelvic cavity, and most recently, on the brain and lungs as well. And whereas there is no cure for Endo, it is thought to be hereditary. Its cause is not known. Thankfully, there are many treatments and management options available which can help greatly improve patients' quality of life. And whereas Endo can only be diagnosed through laparoscopic surgery, and it often takes an average of 10 years to receive diagnosis of Endo, medical professionals frequently are inadequately educated on the diagnosis and treatment of Endo. And whereas patients with this illness often must learn to live with widespread pain throughout their bodies, extreme fatigue, infertility, emotional and mental issues, as well as other autoimmune disorders. And whereas Endo can be present in young women and children as young as eight years of age, which poses unique challenges for this population who suffer not only from the symptoms of the disease, but from both a lack of understanding and social acceptance of it as well. And whereas people with Endo face discrimination from employers, friends, family, and doctors while dealing with the ongoing stress of living with an unpredictable disease and uncertain future. And whereas employers should support the employees with Endo by making adaptations to the work environment so that people with Endo can continue to function at work and not be forced to file for disability. And whereas the Endo Association introduced Endo Awareness Month in March of 1993, and is now observed worldwide through a variety of activities which include educational opportunities, fundraising, marches, and free distribution of popular yellow ribbons and brochures. And whereas the Endo Association local support group, Endo Warriors of the Eastern Shore and other groups around the country have joined to promote Endo awareness and the support through the improved education, diagnosis, research, and treatment, because better understanding of this disease will help guarantee hope for a better future for all those who suffer from it. Now, therefore, I, John R. Heath, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do proclaim March 23rd as Endometriosis Awareness Month in our city, and invite all citizens to learn more about this incurable disease which affects so many women of all ages and races in the global community.
My name is Shannon Pender-Hannah-Walt. I always make sure to put my maiden name in there because that's who I was and where I was when I started this journey. I draw strength from it because everyone always says I'm stubborn, and I know I get that from my grandparents. They worked hard, they loved hard, and they supported hard. When I need the strength to fight this disease and advocate for others, I will always come back to how strong, stubborn, and resilient they were, and it gives me the strength and courage to continue what needs to be done to bring awareness to this disease. Endometriosis is a disease that affects all aspects of your life. Emotionally, mentally, and physically, endometriosis can take everything from you, and it did to me until I decided it was time to fight back, fight for awareness, education, and support so that the generations after me do not have to go through what I and so many other women have. Endo is a whole-body disease, and while the last two years I focused more on the physical side of things such as fertility, excruciating pain, and other immune disorders that are common with Endo, I have decided to bring more awareness to how this disease affects you emotionally and mentally this year. My pain started when I was 15 years old, and started as the doctor saying I had ovarian cyst rupturing. After that, my pain just increased, and the help and analysis from the doctors decreased. My parents took me to so many doctors, I had more CT scans and ultrasounds than I can count, all coming back with the results of nothing. How was that possible? I was in excruciating, debilitating pain that nobody could seem to help me with. My parents started to believe the doctors that I was just trying to get out of school. And honestly, when I look back on it now, they didn't really have a choice. I had severe depression and anxiety because nobody would listen or help me. I felt so alone and dismissed by everyone, I didn't know what I was going to do. The feeling of being dismissed and made out for people to think you were lying is a feeling I would not wish on anyone. They are feelings that I long ago buried, and I tried not to allow back into my life. But I know in doing this mission, I have to be completely honest and brutal so our family, friends, coworkers, and even acquaintances can understand the feeling they share when you look perfectly healthy on the outside. When I was 17, I was at a point where I didn't want to live anymore. I was alone, tired, in pain physically and emotionally, and I was done. I was a shell of myself, going through the motions every day. Having the people who were supposed to protect and help me think I was lying about how I felt was so defeating and crushing. I decided one night I was done. I went and got one of my prescriptions, and I took every last pill in the bottle. My mom just happened to walk in and saw what I had done. She called 911, and they gave me a charcoal to get medication out of my system. I was then sent to a mental rehabilitation center. At that moment, I decided to swallow those pills. I didn't have any feelings. I didn't think about what I was doing would affect anyone else. At that point, I really thought, I just can't keep doing this. Nobody believes me, I'm scared, and I'm tired of fighting. Maybe it was in my head, maybe there really wasn't anything wrong. After that night, my perspective changed. I don't know why, and I don't know how, but I decided I was going to fight. I was going to figure out what was wrong with me, and I wasn't going to let anyone else live the way that I did for the last few years. Nobody should want to take their own life because of how other people make you feel. It took me a long time to be able to let that anger and hurt go towards my family, but I realized they didn't have a choice but to think I was lying because every test came back fine. After five years, I finally found a doctor that would listen to me, and as soon as I told him my symptoms, he said, "I'm certain you have endometriosis." Why did nobody else know what endometriosis was? Why would I spend so many nights in the ER being dismissed because I had period pain? I had surgery. It was the first of my 13 surgeries to try and help remove the lesions and help with the pain. Then we have infertility. Growing up, you don't think about not being able to have children because that's just something that women do, but that wasn't the case. Knowing something was wrong with me and could prevent me from being one of the things I wanted most in this world, and that was to be a mom. The mental impact it has on you is debilitating. I felt not normal, damaged, and discouraged because nobody would want to marry me if I couldn't have children. Unfortunately, there are women who lose the mental battle with themselves or this disease. Many women have committed suicide because of the impact endometriosis has not just on you physically, but mentally as well. Endometriosis has taken so much from me. I've missed so many important dates and celebrations with family and friends, it took away my ability to have children like other women. It took a baby from me during fertility treatments, a baby that was loved and dreamt of, and a baby that is missed and talked about daily. It is still a continuous battle for me daily. I am not the mom or wife that I want to be all the time. The guilt of not always being a present partner for my husband or the full-time hands-on mom I want to be. The guilt I have when I have to cancel plans with my friends or playdates for my children will probably never end, but I will always remind myself, they still love and support me even when I don't. My mission is to change this. We need people to listen and understand when we are talking about how we feel. We need not to be made to feel guilty because we have to cancel plans, miss time from work, or because we spend more time at the doctor than most. The more we talk about endometriosis, the more women and their families will know they are not alone in this fight. It will hopefully give them the courage and strength to fight for themselves, not just physically, but mentally and emotionally as well. I want the word endometriosis to be known as well as if someone says they have an ear infection or strep throat. I know some women do not want to speak publicly about a disease that is so personal, so I will speak for them. Endometriosis has no cure, only treatments. Some doctors will tell you to have a hysterectomy or get pregnant, but that does not stop it from growing on other organs. Endometriosis has been found not just on pelvic organs, but on the lungs and brain as well. It is imperative that we all work together and support each other through this journey. My passion and drive are because I do not want anyone to go through what I have, but I have chosen to fight because you never know who is watching and learning from you. I ask that you remember, just because someone looks okay on the outside doesn't mean they're okay on the inside. If someone says they have Endo, please remember this point in time, and remember how I explained how I felt. It is a complex disease that it requires numerous specialists for each patient. There are no two stories the same. I constantly refer to the quote, "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." I started Endo Warriors of the Eastern Shore three years ago. One of my nieces was basically going through the same thing, and the doctors were dismissing her, and I decided I wasn't going to put up with it anymore. So, this year will be our Second Annual Yellow Day on March 10th. So, if you guys would possibly mind wearing yellow, you can either email the picture to me, or you can paste it or post it on our Facebook group site. And I truly appreciate the support that all of our communities have given us because I wish 20 years ago there was someone like me, because then I would have known that I wasn't alone. So, I just want to thank everyone for taking the time and listening and trying to learn more about endometriosis. Can we take a picture?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
That's one strong lady right there.
It takes a lot of courage for that.
I think we should give her a hand. Well. Next, we have a certificate of recognition. The certificate of recognition is presented to Heather Brooks from the City of Salisbury to acknowledge her new role as Secretary of Kindness and becoming the new leader of Kind SBY. Having served as a kindness commissioner for four years, she has demonstrated her dedication and passion to the spreading of kindness in our city. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand in the seal of the City of Salisbury the 27th day of February 2023.
May I share something, Jack?
No.
You know I can't get, you can't get rid of me that easily. I just want to tell you how, what a journey I've had as the first secretary of kindness, and I couldn't have had a better time at doing it. And I just want to wish Heather good luck, and I just have a few things for her, and I want to tell her, this is going to be more fun than a bag full of monkeys. This just happens to be our next, one of our next projects. She'll tell you about in a few minutes. Tell them, Heather.
So, one of the great pleasures we have is bringing kindness to Dove Point, to their clients. And so, these monkeys will be velcroed to their wheelchairs if they're not comfortable with taking them from us directly. So, it just brings us great joy to be there for that. You just can't even imagine what they receive from a little stuffed animal. So, we can't wait, and I can't wait to share my barrel of monkeys.
Oh, there's four where that came from.
Right on my truck.
Also, I just have to pay a little bit of homage to the person who started this with us, for Kind SBY. And this is Jake Hay, the former mayor. Now, I'm the former secretary. It's all doing well. And Jack has already pledged to be at most of our events at Kind SBY. I'm still a commissioner, I still run the nonprofit, I couldn't run very far. But Jack, I want you to know that it's all... It's all going to be okay. If you can get to one of them. So, Heather, this is for you.
You didn't get away with it. The best heads get on a stick.
As we get a good picture from tonight, that will pop up on the back, and Jake will be retired, so. It's all you.
That's cute.
That's why she couldn't come get my eggs.
That's why. I was busy.
She was printing posters.
Well, it's only taken me three weeks to lose total control.
It'll come back now that she's gone.
Oh, boy. Okay. We're going to press on. I have another proclamation, so. Whereas on July 9th, 2018, the City of Salisbury welcomed chief advisor to the board of World Kindness USA, Michael Lloyd White of Australia, to witness the signing of Resolution Number 2850 by all members of the city council to declare their support for a kinder world for future generations to inherit. And whereas former Mayor Jacob R. Day then surprised Grace Murdoch with a certificate, designated her as Secretary of Kindness for the City of Salisbury. And whereas Secretary of Kindness Murdoch has demonstrated countless acts of kindness and directed the following activities for the city: Goodie Bags, filled with monkeys, for MAC, Kindness Rockets Project, Treats to Clients and Staff at Dove Point, Honored Teachers for Teacher of the Year, Donated Art Supplies to Newton Street Project, Adopt a School, Celebrate Diversity Book Campaign, Dance for Kindness, and so many other acts of kindness. Now, therefore, I, John R. Heath, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim February 27th, 2022, as Grace Murdoch Day in our city to show our...
What did you say? And it's half gone.
All right, we'll give this a shot. Grace Murdoch Day in our city to show our appreciation for her service to the citizens of Salisbury and the City of Salisbury, first and beloved Secretary of Kindness. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand in the seals, the City of Salisbury, on this 27th day of February 2023. And on a serious note, God bless you, huh? Come up and get your certificate.
Thank you. I so appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
It's been a joy, full-time joy. What can I say? Thank you.
Okay. One more. Well, maybe two. I have a certificate of recognition I'd like to present as well. This certificate of recognition is presented to Dominique Cessa from the City of Salisbury to acknowledge that she achieved first runner-up in Ms. Wheelchair Maryland 2023 competition. Being a major advocate for the disabled since she was 17 years old, Dom and her pink wheelchair are well-known in the area and in the kindness community. Dom has served as an original kindness commissioner and currently serves as chairwoman of the Assistive Technology Loan Program Board of Directors of Maryland, a commissioner for the Maryland Commission on Disabilities, and on the Maryland Advisory Council on Hereditary and Congenital Disorders. Thank you, Dom, for your ever-present upbeat attitude and kindness towards others, and being an inspiration to all that meet you. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand in the seal of the City of Salisbury on this 27th day of February 2023.
To make it official. Spunky group tonight.
Did you have control, Jack?
Kindness! He doesn't have his name tag yet.
At this time, I'd like to invite President Boda.
We have one other thing.
Oh.
They have Heather Brooks, who's our new Secretary of Kindness. Do you have a special presentation?
I'm tired of seeing all of us. Thank you for having me. It is a pleasure. I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you to the city council, Mayor Heath, and to our amazing kindness commission for being here to support. On the screen, you'll see the PowerPoint slides that I put together just to give you a little bit of insight to some of the projects that we've been working on recently. And so, if you're unfamiliar with Kind SBY, we are an organization here in Salisbury to create, recognize, and inspire kindness in our community. So, on the first slide, you'll see one of our most recent events, which was, I'm sorry, excuse me, which was Kindness Palooza. Kindness Palooza was a one-day festival at the Riverwalk Amphitheater. We had several hundred people come. It was a very chilly day, but I will say that the acts of kindness that I took place happening that day were amazing. One example I will share with you, just because I'm not going to read all of that, is I had two young women come up to me that were probably middle-school aged. They knew that we were collecting food for the homeless and for the food bank that day, and they said, "Excuse me, Ms. Brooks, can we go over to the donation bins and gather some things? There's a gentleman over there that I believe is homeless." And I said, "Yes, that is exactly what today is all about. It's about inspiring our community to do kind things." So, we went to the bin, they grabbed goodies. Deshaun had gotten some donations for some clothing. We had drinks and food, and we put them together in one of our tote bags, and they brought it over to him. So, I'm thrilled that that event did what it was supposed to do. The next slide shows you a couple of pictures about the event, so you can kind of see what took place that day. We had zumba, we had chalk art. Sammy the Seagull from SU actually did hula-hooping. We had community art projects, Dance for Kindness. It was our fifth year for Dance for Kindness. We had 134 dancers that day. We had our amazing performer and singer, Jay Copeland, there. And it was just a beautiful day, between organizations and acts of kindness from each of the vendors, it was an amazing event. The next slide that you'll see is about our Adopt a School program. I'm sure some of you have heard about it because this is our second year. The goal of the program is to inspire community organizations, businesses, and individuals to spread kindness by adopting one of our schools here in Macamico County. So, today, we have 26 schools that have been adopted. We have three that are remaining. So, if you know of anyone that's interested, that would require them pulling together goodies for each of the staff, and then dropping those off. And so, I have the totals for the staff at each school, and they can adopt a school on the United Way Sure Get Connected site. On the next slide, it shows you a couple of pictures of some of the blessings that have happened in our community. Some of them have been doughnuts, ornaments, breakfast, cookies, a lot of food. But then, there's also been lots of gifts as well. One of my favorite ones was Grace and Martin. They adopt, they've adopted Choices Program, and they actually did a really cool puzzle that the staff could come in and just have something to kind of decompress during their day, rather than food, because they do get a lot of food. But it really has helped boost morale, and the blessings that have come as a result of this program to those that are actually giving the kindness are immeasurable. My mom is a part of a whole street of neighbors, and they all together take turns doing the blessings to the school. So, it's pretty exciting to see how excited they get about being involved in this program. The next slide you'll see is about our most recent week, which was Random Acts of Kindness Week, which I had the pleasure of doing with our new mayor. He was ready to go and spread kindness. We delivered flowers to Anchorage Healthcare Facility. We distributed art supplies and doughnuts to a local school. And then Sharon Washington, one of our commissioners and myself, distributed flowers downtown to some of our local businesses and to random strangers, and they were totally shocked that we wanted to give them a flower, and they asked us why. And then, I personally work at Salisbury University, so I had to do something on campus. So, I gave out 100 gifts to student staff and faculty. So, that's a little bit about Random Acts of Kindness Week. The next slide shows you a few of those pictures from that day and that week. And then, our last couple of slides are really just about our upcoming initiatives. The MAC Center, we give a gift to seniors. In the past, we've done gift bags, which you can see in the photo. This year, we're going to do a stuffed animal to brighten their day. So, that'll be our Meals on Wheels gift. And then, Dove Point is the stuffed animal giveaway. And then Dove Point is the stuffed animal giveaway with our bag of monkeys, which I have lots of in my trunk. People think I'm very odd with these monkeys in my trunk. Our last slide is some upcoming goals for our nonprofit. We would like to increase the number of kindness commissioners. We currently have 16 to date. Our goal would be, our ideal goal would be 20 or more, and that just helps support our list of initiatives. And then brainstorming some new goals of activities that we would like to focus on that will support Salisbury in a greater way. Promoting our sponsorship opportunities so we can keep our initiative going and encouraging community members to get involved, whether it be volunteering at an event or just resharing, reposting, and keep the kindness going. My contact information is there. Please reach out to me if you have questions or ideas, and thank you again for your time tonight.
We do have two more things. Mr. President, give me one more second.
Okay.
Mr. Stefan Feliciano?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and?
This is nerve-wracking. Good evening. For most of you that might not know, my name is Stefan Feliciano. I am the current Chair of the Human Rights Advisory Committee for the city of Salisbury. And before I begin to speak, I just would like to say that as February ends, just remember that Black history is American history, and we should celebrate it way past beyond the month of February.
Yes, I agree.
So most of you don't know that the Human Rights Advisory Committee was created by city council resolution in 2016, and part of our responsibility was to advise the mayor on finding ways how to strengthen the bond between our diverse citizens and the communities that they represent. So with that thought, our committee started strategizing on how to develop a system to deliver on those commitments of value, inclusivity, and recognition. So that all worked out, and on April 21st, the mayor's office conducted a press release, and they announced the creation of the City of Salisbury Human Rights Award. And the intended recipient of such an award is to any individual, business, or organization that has supported a transformation of structures or attitudes for human rights within the city. With this award, we set out to recognize and celebrate the remarkable contributions made by our Salisbury citizens, the organizations, and the businesses. I know I'm grateful, but we should be also grateful to have them, appreciate their efforts, and we will continue to continue to support them. When we say human rights, we say it with great emphasis that everyone should be treated with fairness, respect, and equality. I got a page too, I'm sorry. So this year's recipient, by virtue of kindness, has treated every person that she meets with great love and dignity. And though she may often face great obstacles herself, she is consistently able to share her warm-heartedness and considerate nature with others. She advocates for herself and educates others that being different doesn't have to be something to fear. This person selflessly serves as a chairwoman, a member of the many committees and commissions, both here locally and throughout the street. She has strength and is resilient in her fight for human rights for everyone, despite the color of their skin, their economic status, and/or their limitations. So without further ado, on behalf of the city of Salisbury, the city council, the Human Rights Advisory Committee, both present and past members, it is with our greatest appreciation we hereby present the 2022 Human Rights Award to Dominique Sessa.
Congratulations, Kenna. Got you twice, huh?
It's a good surprise.
But Dom, you still have to listen to your mom.
We can move the mic over. We can move the mic.
It's two times.
That's twice.
Twice, and one thing is working with the mouth. One, thank you so much, and he's right. Everyone has a human right. I am surprised, not once, but twice. And I think one of the most important parts, like you said, meeting people with love is important as an advocate because you have to meet people where they are, and you have to meet people where they need it. Because a lot of times, we will face ignorance in these communities that are, ah, but a lot of times, people don't know unless you're going to teach them. And, you know, Salisbury is a great community, but we're still growing. And I see change every day because you have to be the change that you want to see. And if you want to make those changes, you have to be it. And you have to be a changemaker. And sometimes it can be very difficult, you know? Because sometimes not everyone will meet you where you're at. But I believe with a little love and kindness and determination, anything can be possible. So thank you, I'm very appreciative of this. And it's exciting, I'll have to do it on Zoom.
One last surprise. But your grace.
Did you see that glare?
But always remember, with every queen, there's a queen mother.
Smart man.
Grace is the pageant mom, she says.
So we may at some point get this legislative portion of the meeting started, but what we had tonight was great. And Jack, I oftentimes feel like I am one of the monkeys in the bag. That's my life. So anyway, we want to recognize one other person this evening. And so for a minute, pretend that I am Mayor Jack Keith reading this as I do this proclamation. Whereas Julia Glanz, a native of Long Island, New York, fell in love with Salisbury while visiting the Eastern Shore with her parents as a child, and enrolled in Salisbury University, where she majored in business management and political science and earned a master's degree in 2013 in conflict analysis and dispute resolution. And whereas during her sophomore year at Salisbury University, Ms. Glanz first came to the mayor's office as an intern under then-mayor Jim Ierton. Whereas in 2015, Ms. Glanz returned to the city to become Assistant City Administrator under Mayor Ierton and City Administrator Tom Stevenson, and two years later, became Salisbury's first-ever female city administrator when her predecessor moved to another position in the city's Department of Public Works as part of a management reorganization, not a version of The Hunger Games, just so everybody's clear about that. Whereas in May 2020, when Mayor Day's Army National Guard unit was deployed to the Horn of Africa as part of Operation Enduring Freedom, he appointed Ms. Glanz as acting mayor in his absence. Mayor Day said, "In Julia Glanz, we have the person who I knew at the time could carry forth the vision that I swore to our citizens we would achieve when I first ran for office." And whereas, Ms. Julia Glanz became the city of Salisbury's 29th mayor during the most challenging time in city history due to the pandemic and its limitations of direct contact with people, restrictions on movement and travel, change in our ordinary lifestyle and economics, and uncertainty about the future. Because of her love for Salisbury, Mayor Glanz challenged herself to successfully lead the city as our 29th mayor. Now, therefore, I, John R. Heath, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim February 27th, 2023, as Julia Glanz 29th Mayor of Salisbury Day in our city to show our appreciation for her service to the citizens of Salisbury, the city's beloved 29th mayor, and wish her luck in all of her future endeavors. She will be terribly missed.
Well, they didn't get me twice, Dom, but they got me once. This week snuck up on me, and as I left the house this morning, I was asked, you know, how I was feeling, and I didn't have a lot of feelings yet, but I knew they would be coming about today. So as I finish up a lot of, you know, my lasts with the city, it's going to get harder and harder, I think, as the week goes on. But I'm incredibly proud of the work that this team has done together, this council, this community. There's so much that we have, that we should be proud of, passing incredible legislation, passing strong budgets, creating new opportunities and new ways to recognize our citizens, our residents. So I'm leaving here with my head held high, and I'm so grateful for all of the opportunities here. And I'm not going anywhere. And I was recruited to a board earlier today, so I will be giving back in a new way. So watch out for me. I'll be bugging you from the other side of the table. But I'm so thankful for all the opportunities that Salisbury has given me. It's where I got my start, and I'm not going to forget it. Thank you.
Oh, don't leave. Come on, you came for the fun stuff. You, oh, you got the fun stuff just started.
You look good.
I just want to say best in.
Oh, now you.
Ever.
Ever. Totally agree.
Be kind.
Oh, God. See you, see you, Dom. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move. Second.
All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On the chair of votes, aye. I wrote four. We actually have five councilmen.
Keep up, keep up.
I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Mrs. Nichols?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have Resolution Number 3221 approving the appointment of Sean Jester to the Board of Appeals for term ending January 2026. Resolution Number 3222 approving the appointment of Morris Nguaba to the Board of Appeals for term ending January 2026. Resolution Number 3223 approving the appointment of Edward Torbert to the Board of Appeals for term ending January 2026. Resolution Number 3224 approving the appointment of William Hill to the Board of Appeals for term ending January 2026. Resolution Number 3225 approving the appointment of Lisa Campbell to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending February 2026. Resolution Number 3226 approving the appointment of Robert Graham to the Truth Committee for term ending February 2026. Resolution Number 3227 approving the appointment of Brianna Curtis to the Youth Development Advisory Committee for term ending February 2026. And there are also requests from the following companies for manufacturing exemption approvals due to the equipment they purchased in 2021. DeCarlo Precision Instruments, Inc., K&amp;L Microwave, Inc., Pepsi Bottling Ventures LLC, Purdue Foods LLC, and Spartech LLC. And that's it.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Hearing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, chair votes aye. At this time, could I have the following individuals please stand up if you are here? Sean Jester, Marwese Nguaba, Edward Torbert, William Hill, Lisa Campbell, Robert Graham, Brianna Curtis. Anybody online? All right. Thank you all for volunteering and serving on our committees. We appreciate your dedication and your time, and thank you. And if anybody out there is interested in serving on any committee or commission, please go to the city's website, salisbury.md, and go to the mayor's office, and they have a list of committees and commissions that have openings. All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3201.
So move. Second.
Mrs. Glanz?
I think it's only fitting that my last council meeting, I have to read an annexation document. They're my favorite. Andy, why don't you come up here? Resolution Number 3201, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury to be known as South Division Street Annexation, beginning at a point being an existing corner of the corporate limits line of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, near the westerly line of South Division Street at its intersection with the northerly right-of-way line of Only Road, extended a bunch of numbers by and with the said line of Only Road, north 89 degrees, 22 minutes, 31 seconds. East, north 89 degrees, I don't even know how to read these, 22 feet, 31 inches, 232 decimal two, six feet, to the point of the said line of Only Road and the corporate limits line, more numbers, thence leaving the said line and by with the easterly line of the lands of OT 2005 LLC, north 3 degrees, 13 minutes, 1 second. East, 348 decimal 00 feet to a point of the northerly line of the said OT 2005 LLC lands, thence by and with the said line of OT 2005 LLC, north 89 degrees, 47 minutes, 42 seconds. West, 224 decimals, 24 decimal 85 feet to a point on the existing corporate limits line near the westerly right-of-way line of South Division Street, thence by and with the said line, south 4 degrees, 23 minutes, 25 seconds. West, 351 decimal 82 feet to the point of the beginning containing 1.831 acres, more or less. I swear this is a, I'm on some different TV show other than Pac-14 reading.
It's called Do You Want to Be a Surveyor? That's the TV show. Any questions or comments from the council?
No.
None.
All those in favor of approving. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3201, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. I do want to announce that the public hearing for this will be held on March 27. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3202 for first reading.
So move. Second.
Resolution Number 3202, a resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the City of Salisbury to be known as South Division Street Annexation, beginning at a point being an existing corner of the corporate limits line of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, near the westerly line of South Division Street at its intersection with northerly right-of-way of Only Road, extended those same numbers, thence by and with the said line of Only Road, north 89 degrees, 22 minutes, 32 seconds, east, 232 decimal two six feet to a point of the said line of Only Road and corporate limits line, those same numbers, thence leaving the said line and by and with the easterly line of the lands of OT 2005 LLC, north 3, 13 minutes, 1 second, east, 348 decimal zero zero feet to a point on the northerly line of the said OT 2005 LLC lands, same numbers, thence by and with the said line of OT 2005 LLC, north 89 degrees, 47 minutes, 42 seconds, west, 224 decimal eight five feet to a point of the existing corporate limit line near the westerly right-of-way line of South Division Street, those same numbers, thence by and with the said line, south 4 degrees, 23 minutes, 25 seconds, west, 351 decimal eight two feet to the beginning point containing 1.831 acres, more or less.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Andy. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3202, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3228.
So move.
Second.
This is more like it. Resolution Number 3228, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, adopting a capital improvement plan for the five-year period FY 24 through FY 28, whereas it is important for the city to develop a short-range plan showing its capital outlay needs and setting forth a plan of financing those needs. And whereas the development of such plan helps to ensure that the city's short-range capital needs are being addressed in a reasonable manner, place those needs in priority order and anticipate the resources that will be available to finance those needs. And whereas the city staff has developed the attached capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in fiscal year 2024 and ending in fiscal year 2028, and whereas the city council has reviewed the attached capital improvement plan and finds that it reflects the capital needs of the city as can best be reasonably anticipated.
Do the council have any questions or comments?
I do. I have a comment.
Sure.
As long as, I have no other questions or comments, as long as what we discussed in our work session last week will be, our questions and our concerns will be adhered to. That's the only thing I have to say about the capital improvement program. As long as we, our voices were heard and we kind of get the questions.
Sure, we took all of your comments down in notes and are working on making sure we get responses from directors back to you. I think some of those have already gone out to the respective council members, but understood.
At this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3228, adopting a capital improvement plan for the five-year period of FY 24 to 28, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3229.
So moved. Second.
And there she is.
Resolution Number 3229, a resolution of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, accepting a rifle forfeited by the Circuit Court for Wycomico County and adding such rifle to the Salisbury Police Department's weapons inventory for use of the Salisbury Police Department Tactical Team. Whereas, in an order dated August 4, 2022, and entered into case number K-15-0384 pursuant to a plea agreement by and amongst the parties, which order is attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit 1, the Circuit Court of Wycomico County, Maryland forfeited unto the City of Salisbury, Maryland, for the use of the Salisbury Police Department, a POF USA rifle, model number P-308, serial number 13BA-11414. And whereas the Salisbury Police Department desires to maintain the rifle as a resource for its tactical team, and whereas upon the approval of this resolution, the rifle will be incorporated into the Salisbury Police Department's weapons inventory, where it will be maintained and used as a tool for public safety.
Questions or comments from the council?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 3229, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Glanz. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2779 for second reading.
So move. Second.
Our city attorney this evening is Laura Hay.
Good evening, everyone. Ordinance Number 2779, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to accept additional grant funding from the Maryland Department of the Environment, MDE, Bay Restoration Fund, BRF, and to approve a budget amendment to the FY 2023 Water Sewer Fund budget to appropriate such MDE-BRF funds for chemicals and equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. This is before you tonight for second reading. There's been no changes or amendments since the first reading.
Questions or comments?
None.
All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 2779, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2780 for first reading.
So move.
This is Ordinance 2780, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment for the city's special revenue fund budget and to accept and appropriate donated funds from the Bless Our Children campaign for the Santa's Workshop Program. Whereas, the City of Salisbury's Housing and Community Development Department hosts a Santa's Workshop Program every year, and whereas Bless Our Children wishes to donate funds to help sponsor this annual program, and whereas the donation of funds will be used to purchase gifts, refreshments, and equipment used to run the program, and whereas these donations are to be used to support public welfare by purchasing toys to provide children. Whereas appropriations necessary for this donation must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the county, or the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city's FY 23 Special Revenue Fund be and hereby is amended as follows: Increase 1070045642381001, contribution revenue by $500, and increase 1070054600681001, operating expenses also by $500.
Questions or comments?
None.
All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 2780 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2781 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
This is Ordinance 2781, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to accept grant funds from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore in the amount of $7,500 for the Summer Youth Employment Program. Whereas the City of Salisbury employs high school students for an eight-week program from June 20, 2023 to August 11, 2023. Whereas the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore has awarded the City of Salisbury a workforce development grant in the amount of $7,500. Whereas the city's Housing and Community Development Department will use the funds to cover the salary costs of two student employees for the duration of the summer program, and whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Mayor Jack R. Heath is hereby authorized to establish a grant account for the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of the workforce development grant monies in the amount of $7,500. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury as follows: The City of Salisbury's Grant Fund Budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Number 1, increase the CFEs revenue account 10500426100 by $7,500. 2, increase part-time salaries account 10500501006 by $6,144. Increase fringe benefits account 10500502 by $792. And 4, increase operating account 10500546006 by $564.
Questions or comments?
None.
I'll call for all those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 2781 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. And the last one, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 2782 for first reading.
So move. Second.
I want to give that one to Megan.
This is Ordinance Number 2782, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to accept additional SFY 2023 Homelessness Solutions Program funding in the amount of $9,574, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the homelessness service case specialist position. Whereas the Somerset County Health Department received funding from the Department of Housing and Community Development specific to the delivery of homelessness solutions program services, and whereas the Somerset County Health Department has awarded the City of Salisbury homelessness solutions program grant funding, and whereas the purpose of the grant program is to support homeless services, including case management, in the City of Salisbury. Whereas the Somerset County Health Department has awarded the city additional funds in the amount of $9,574, exceeding the original amount approved by Ordinance 2721 FY 23 Schedule C. And whereas the additional funds in the amount of $9,574 will be used to provide street outreach services, HSP case management, and rapid rehousing rental assistance. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of four-fifths of the council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Acting Mayor Jack R. Heath is hereby authorized to accept funding from the Somerset County Health Department for additional funds in the amount of $9,574. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the city's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase the HSP revenue account ending in 603 by $9,574. Increase the HSP non-clerical salary expense account ending in 002 by $9,574.
Any comments?
I just want to say all the grant funds that we've accepted just now is amazing.
Yeah.
That is really incredible.
All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 2782 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Hay. At this time, do we have any public comments? We discussed it a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
I thought at the work session. I believe, was this the one that is going to be some student housing?
Yeah.
It's going to be student housing.
Is it 15?
It's not developed.
Mm-mm.
It's just a lot that they want to annex into the city.
It's 15, is it 15?
Well, they got to pay to hook up for all that stuff, and then they will pay taxes to receive services from the city.
Just a question generally, is there interest in subdivision areas outside of the city property, city proper that are interested in being annexed?
Oh, there's quite a bit of interest in stuff, especially with the here is home. There's some properties that will be annexing into the city over the next five years. So it's, we see a lot of requests coming in. Yes, sir.
My name's Ed Torbert. He just appointed me to the Board of Appeals. I just wanted to thank you all, council, mayor, and the staff, for allowing me this opportunity to serve our community again. It's something I have done for a long time, and I'm happy to be able to continue to do so. All right, one other thing. When the lady was up here, had a picture of Jack, or Mayor Day.
Wonder where to get one of those?
When he turned it around, I saw a picture of Jack Heath there on a stick like that. I was waiting for Jeff Dunham to walk in the room. Sorry, Jack, I had to sit.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Ed. I appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Dylan Main, and I have two matters I would like to discuss. First, I live on Parker Road, and last year, the Wycomico County Planning and Zoning Board approved the final comprehensive development plan for the property located between Parker Road and Beagle and Park Drive, north of Old Ocean City Road, which is 35 acres. There will be access to this development from both Parker Road and Beagle and Park Drive. This property is actually in the Salisbury city limits, but the county had to also approve since Parker Road is a county road. The development will have 209 townhomes. This area already has traffic backups certain times of the day. What is going to be done to handle this traffic, especially on Parker Road?
Didn't you just say Parker Road's in the county?
Yeah.
That's... Julia, do you want to answer that? But that road is in the county, they're responsible for that, but I'm sure that we have provisions in place. It's a collaborative effort.
I was on the planning commission when that came up, and there was a traffic study done, and the traffic study said the streets and the road that there could handle the number of people, and that was what was voted on by the planning commission.
My second matter, the city, as well as the county, seems to have a problem with litter everywhere. It is quite disgusting on some roads. What is the city going to do about this problem? I actually go out and clean the litter up on certain roads myself. What can the city and other young people do to help?
So the Sustainability Committee frequently schedules cleanups in areas, and if you have an area that you think we should be hitting that's within the city, we would love to know about it. So, you know, I think that's something that, if you're really passionate about, I think the public is welcome to attend the meetings, whether you're a member or not, and we actually have a meeting this Wednesday. So meet with me after the meeting, and I'll get you all the details, okay? All right, so that would be great.
You can also go on the city website as well, if you want to do a cleanup. So you go on the website and pull it up, and if you want to do a cleanup, go in and let them know that you want to do a cleanup, and if you could hit each one of our city council members, we possibly come out and help you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Also, last year, which takes effect on July 1,
Also, last year, which takes effect on July 1st of this year, the city of Salisbury passed a plastic bag ban. So that's going to help with a lot of the plastic that we see floating around the city. And this year, right now, it, they're discussing it at the, at a state level. So either this year or next year, we'll probably see a statewide ban on plastic bags.
And that's something that came from the Sustainability Committee, to give you an idea of what they do. So.
Excuse me a minute. I got to ask this young man a question. You got something to say?
I commend you for coming forward.
Well, I was about to say that.
You're doing something that a lot of adults wouldn't do. So I'm very proud of you.
Yes.
And even if you could talk to some of your friends, and if they have some issues or some concerns for the city, ask them to bring them forward, because that's what we need to hear. If we don't hear from you, we don't know what you need or want. So thank you so much. Thank you.
And also thank you for volunteering to pick up the litter.
Yes.
It's, it's very, very kind of you to be, you know, very thoughtful of your, your city and your environment. Thank you again for coming forward.
All right. At this time, we will go to the administration for administration, administration comments.
Do you want to say anything before? No? Okay. Two things. Angela, don't get mad at me, because I'm going to go first.
Help yourself.
We have, we have a, usually Angela gives the comment, and I make the second. But there is still a tremendous need for blood in our area. If you're capable of donating blood, please do so. It's improved slightly from a couple of weeks ago, but it's still not in a good shape. So if you can do that, that would be fine. And the other thing is, I'm very happy that we found a resolution to the, the small homes on N Street. And hopefully by the end of March, we should see people in those homes. And I will also say that there are 24 homes with wraparound services, but we have 51 people on the waiting list for 24 spots.
Wow.
So we still have work cut out for us. Thank you. Always. Oh, yes. This Wednesday, it's Coffee with the Mayor, and I will be at my old council office at the Bagel Bakery. And feel free to come in, sit down, and tell me what's on your mind. And I'll be doing this once a month. We're going to be switching back and forth between evening, social, and breakfast. And we're going to switch. It's this Wednesday. Thank you. Eight to 10.
Eight, 8:00 AM.
This is normal hours at the Bagel Bakery. They probably missed the business.
So we'll go to council comments. I'll start with Mrs. Gregory.
Well, since we talked about the Sustainability Committee, I want to point out that we did just fill one of the vacancies, I think. But there's still another vacancy on the Disability of Salisbury Committee, so we could use another member. I'd love to see folks apply. So please get out there and apply.
Ms. Jackson.
I just want to say that, you know, Black history is prominent just, they're saying for this month, but Black history is something that extends forever and ever. It's something that does never stop, because our history here, we have a rich Black history here, very rich Black history. So be reminded of your Black history. Continue, because we are Black history. If you are an African American, you are a part of Black history. You will always be a part of Black history. Your forefathers and mothers have paved the way for us, and we continue to pave the way for the generations to come. So next month, in March, it will be Women's History Month. So recognize a woman who has made history, not only throughout the world, or recognize somebody right here in Salisbury, Maryland, because we do have women here who are history and have made history, not only here, but all around. So I just want to, it's kind of hard, because when they gave us one month, I was kind of upset about the one month. But it's no need of getting upset about a month when you yourself can carry it on throughout the year. So carry Black history throughout the year. Carry Black history in your heart. I thank everybody tonight for coming, and especially this young man who spoke so eloquent about the needs and concerns that he has about his community. I wish that anyone that has saw this on PAC 14 tonight, if you have young people, or if even you, speak out. That's what the Black, that's what we are here for. We're here to hear your concerns. We're not, just not here to have, I mean, we need to know what you need and want also. So I thank you, young man, for coming, and I thank you for speaking out. Thank you.
Well, I guess I have to second what Jack has said. But I do say, if you are healthy enough, if you're blessed to be healthy enough, please donate blood. Here on, in our region, we're very, very short. You can call the blood bank on Mount Herman Road. Also, they take, you could donate Plaza, red, just red blood cells. And, what'd you say?
Platelets.
Oh, and plate, sorry, red platelets. Sorry, it's platelets. And, and whole blood. And just the countless lives you can save from that, that small act is amazing. Again, I just want to praise the young man for being out here and, and sharing his ideas and his concerns with his community. And boy, what a night has it been with all the kindness proclamations and all the awards and the, the people who are volunteering for committees. That's fantastic. We have such a great, great city. Great, I just love Salisbury. And, and last but certainly not least, Julia Glanz. It's just not, not enough time. But, but just thank you for everything you have done for Salisbury. And I know you will continue to do things, good things. And I guess that's it for now.
Ms. Alton?
Since Bo is busy, I'll, I'll say Ms. Alton.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for this wonderful week of onboarding. It's been officially one week since I was appointed. Julia, what a week it's been. Great chance to work with you. But I'm excited to see you do some wonderful things up at the state level. So really excited for you. Just wanted to talk a little bit more on what Councilman Jackson mentioned. So today I had the chance to tour with the, the city and the Arts Department. And we took a walk around the Chipman Center and in a lot of the neighborhoods around the, the new town and downtown region. And just as she mentioned, there is so much history here, and it's rich history. And it's unfortunate that a lot of it's not extremely documented. And, and that was something that I learned through the NAB Center. A lot of this stuff is through the oral narrative. And it's, it's phenomenal to hear that they've been able to document some of these stories and having some of these women walk through what actually happened in a lot of these communities and a lot of these neighborhoods. So an encouragement, check out the NAB Center. They have some wonderful things going on there. And, you know, March isn't over yet, or February's not over yet. So please use that last bit of time to celebrate Black History Month. Two more events. The Women's Commission for Wycomico is actually putting together an event this March that I wanted to put on everyone's agenda. March 14th, we are hosting a Bring Your Own Baby event. Yes, I know, it's a different BYOB. So Catherine Jones at the, where is it? The Bay Area Center for Independent Living, she is putting together a program where she has essentially provided an opportunity for women to bring their babies to work with them, which I think is wonderful. It provides for some mobility and supports these women as they try to balance the difficulties of motherhood and wanting to be, you know, a working caregiver. So there's going to be an open house. It's open to the public. Please feel free to reach out if you want some more information. I'd love to be able to, to show you what we are trying to support at the Wycomico Women's Commission.
Thank you. I wanted to recognize Von Siggers is here, former Salisbury City Council President.
Could you please, I was going to say stand. And she is Black history, because she is a former city councilwoman. So Von, please stand, so people can recognize you and don't just sit there. Pull your mask down.
Von's daughter, Bobby, is also the store manager for a Walmart in Cambridge, Maryland.
Yeah.
So she's, she's awesome, Black history, good friend of mine. I do, before we move on with our next part of the meeting, I want to again thank Julia for her years of service, her friendship. Really appreciate everything she's brought to the table over the years. And we will miss her. So like I said to the mayor, expect texts from me regularly, regularly text the mayor. So I'll be keeping you in touch from Salisbury with pictures of Old Bay and crabs and reminding you where the Eastern Shore is.
All right. So at this time, we will, I'll entertain a motion for the Salisbury City Council to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
And let me read this, don't get in trouble. At approximately 7:15 PM, council will entertain a vote to convene in closed session for the following reason, to consult with legal, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter under the authority of the Maryland Open Meetings Law, annotated code of Maryland general provisions, Articles 3-305B7. So that, who was the, who made the motion?
Angela.
Ms. Blake did.
And I second.
I got to rewrite all this stuff. All those in favor of moving into a closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you. Thank you.